Good morning and welcome to the County Commission's December 12th meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and again welcome. Would remind you to silence your cell phones, please. And meeting documents are available to next Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Craig or Carol could help you with that. With that, I'd entertain a motion to go into routine business and to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes, corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes of 12:05.
Make a motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the December 5th minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Bills to be paid of $3,487,922.85.
Pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner, Mr. Litz.
(laughing). Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Just a couple of comments on the bills here today. We have our monthly payment to the state for motor vehicle fees of $2,780,549. I tried to talk AP into not sending the check. I thought that'd take care of us for a little bit, but they refused, so we're going to pay the state. Also notable on there would be the Armor Correctional Health Services. If you add up the management fee, the medical health care and the true-up this month for jail medical, our expenses are $266,357.34. Also, one other thing of note on here that caught my eye was we had an expert witness through the public defender's office, and for one month, in the month of October, that bill was $26,295.56.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Mr. Litz?
Thank you.
If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four is reports that are filed. First is a juvenile detention center report for November of this year. Item five, personnel actions. Item A is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item six is RDID number 43676 for a owner-occupied status at 4509 South Magnolia Avenue for $977.87.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Anyone have any questions for Olivia? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seven is to authorize the county auditor to post notice of hearing on December 26th to consider supplements to various 2017 budgets and funds. Do you have any comments about that, Bob? Or Kim? Kim?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are just requesting authorization from you to post the notice of hearing. The hearing for the budget supplements will be scheduled for Tuesday, December 26th. A list of the requested supplements was attached to your briefing notice, and I can answer any questions if you have those.
Any questions for Kim? Do you think that is going to be exactly what it's going to be? Or will we see changes even up to that point of the year?
I think this would be, any changes we would see would be possible reductions in the requests based on the bills that are submitted for payment in the next two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your work on that.
Make a motion to approve, authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion to approve that notice of hearing on December 26th for 2017 budgets. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of hearing on January 2nd for retail on-sale liquor license applications submitted by Garrettson Sportsman Club. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any questions for Olivia? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no planning and zoning notices. Number nine is petition for compromise, DPNNO number 30117 for $20,000. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you today is, you have the Compromise of Lean, DPNNO 30117, in the amount of $20,000. You have the opportunity to read through the materials. I want to explain why you're getting one more sheet of paper that's out there. The applicant provided to us this morning and a copy of a letter that he has from his attorney at the time when he went through bankruptcy. And I'll let you take a few minutes as you take and read through that, and otherwise I can just summarize what we have here. We have an applicant who has incurred expenses through a hospitalization that Minnehaw County paid. At that time, that was applied as a lien. At a similar time to that, the applicant was also going through bankruptcy. And that is what the letter that you're receiving states, that his attorney had actually talked to Gary Colwell, who was about three states attorneys back, I believe it was, to go through and talk about this. So it raises some additional questions as to if the lien was accurately applied. He certainly has been under the assumption, based upon what his attorney had told him from this letter, that that was taken care of. So I'm going to leave it at that particular moment. He is closing on a house. He's building a house and is closing on that house next Monday, which is when this came up, because the lien is still with the Register of Deeds.
Maggie, have you had an opportunity to see this letter?
I have. I looked at it this morning about half an hour ago.
You have any questions or concerns about it?
Well, I will, I can say this, Mr. Chairman. Because of the timing within the last half an hour that I've reviewed it, what I can't tell you is what took place after this conversation. That's articulated in the letter. So what I don't know is what action the commission back in 2001 would have taken. We just haven't had time to go back and see what's in the minutes. But I think that you can certainly take the substantive nature of the letter as to what it appears. I think you can draw some conclusions about what might have happened, but we just don't know for sure because we haven't had time to look at the minutes. And I further haven't, I have to believe that the statute, the statutory authority was the same in statute at the time, back in 2001, under 281415, the authority that you have to compromise. But I haven't had time to double-check that either.
Does anyone have any questions about this particular piece before we maybe ask for more of the details? Commissioner?
This is for the state's attorney also. Does bankruptcy discharge the county lien on these things?
That is another issue that I haven't been able to research specifically this morning, but I believe that it's a timing issue. Leans are statutory in nature, so they attach to property. The question, I believe, is a matter of timing. Was the lien perfected prior to the time of the filing of the petition in bankruptcy? So I think that it's a timing issue. And further than, there's another question in my mind that I would need to resolve as to if the personal liability is discharged in bankruptcy, whether or not the lien survives. And I think that that probably too is a question of perfection. So whether or not the lien was recorded prior to the filing of the bankruptcy. And so that may, obviously it's almost 18 years ago, but that may have impacted the decision that was made as articulated in the letter by counsel at the time at the state's attorney's office.
Carol, would you reiterate again when the closing is on this?
His closing is next Monday.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Carol? Commissioner Karski?
I'm just kind of putting together a timeline. It looks like, he says the bankruptcy was filed on December 28th of 2000. 2/15/01 is when the compromise was filed in our system, or that's the way it looks after it. He has a discharge of debtor in April of '01, meaning I would assume that that was, I don't know if that was filed, that discharge of debtor was against the county or the hospital. I'm not certain which one that is.
Mr. Chairman. So the discharge of debts would be as to all debts that were part of the petition or outside of the petition but by federal law wrapped into the bankruptcy, even if they weren't listed in the petition? So the discharge is as to not just one specific debt, but typically as to all the debts that were under the jurisdiction of the bankruptcy court.
Okay. This letter answers a lot of questions, or at least questions that I had in my mind. Is there a statute of limitations? If this was supposed to be discharged and we paid it when it should have been discharged, do we have recourse back to whatever hospital we paid this to?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that there's necessarily a statute of limitations on leans. Leans are statutory in nature, and the termination of a lien typically is upon the death of an individual. So that's the easy answer, Commissioner. So as far as, you know, the specifics of, you know, what all transpired here, unfortunately due to the passage of time, you know, I don't think I can answer, you know, what exactly was intended here. But, you know, and then as far as a recourse against the hospital, I think that, it's my understanding that what happened here is, it appears to me that the county, apparently back in 2001, had reduced this down to $20,000. So, I mean, the hospital was coming to the county to pay the debt by statute as poor relief, so.
Commissioner Bender?
So just as a clarification, the county doesn't have recourse against the hospital, because this was an obligation of the county.
Correct.
So the question is whether the bankruptcy affected the county's lien on this individual. That's the way I understand it.
And again, that is a question of timing, so, I believe. And so, again, as I was handed this, I haven't had probably the time that I needed to map this out, but it appears to me that, as Commissioner Karski's articulated, the bankruptcy was filed in December of 2000. The debts were discharged in April of 2001, and that this lien, is my understanding, was placed of record in January of 2001, so after the filing of the bankruptcy. Now, the only question that I can't answer for you here on the fly is, is that definitive? Is the lien absolutely discharged? Because of the fact that it's a statutory lien, it attaches to property, while the personal obligation to pay may have been discharged, whether or not the lien survives the bankruptcy, it appears to me, because of the fact that it was filed after the bankruptcy was filed, that gives me a belief that the lien was discharged. But at the same time, I, you know, I haven't had the time to absolutely research that. But my, the conclusion that I've had of what I've been able to review statutorily today is that because of the timing, because of the fact that the bankruptcy was filed first, that I think that the commission has some level of standing to believe that it was discharged. Now, the other part of this is this letter and the fact that there was a representation, as you see articulated here, that the lien was going to be removed.
Mr. Chairman? Also in 2011, according to the notes, we, as the county commission, did a quote "global reduction of leans" to $20,000. So it would seem to me that that was the second or third step in this conversation that would verify that that was disclosed and the letter is accurate. Okay. Other questions? Do you want to continue with your presentation? Or anyone have any specific questions about what's going on with this letter that just showed up?
Well, my impression would be that I would agree with the state's attorney that it's likely that this lien was not effective, based on the timing. And clearly, that was a representation made, you know, I mean, lawyers can say anything they want in letters, and then when you don't have the next piece of the puzzle, sometimes you don't know exactly what the response was. But I think, given the timing here, that it appears that our lien was not timely, was not filed in time to survive the bankruptcy. And given the fact that this gentleman's purchasing a home, will become a taxpayer in the county, that he has shown, he paid off 100% of what was owed to Turner County. He did make some payments for the assistance that he received in '93 and '98. I would be willing to make a motion to discharge the debt in full.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second, but before we do that, the petitioner does have the ability to make any comments. And again, you do not need to identify yourself. You can stay where you're at. You can stay seated. If you'd like to make a comment, we'd love to hear from you. You don't need to make any formal presentation in front of the microphone. So if you could speak up, and you can sit down, you don't have to stand up if you prefer. So please, we'd be happy to hear from you. We have all the, unfortunately, black and white history, and we can see the steps that you've taken over the years to make things much better in your life and become very productive. And you've made a positive attempt, in my mind, to try to solve most of the issues. I don't know that this letter changes my mind at all in that conversation. So we have a motion and a second to compromise, and I'm not sure, I have a cold, so I'm not sure I heard an amount.
Nothing. Compromise in full.
Okay.
That's correct. Compromise in full for no payment.
Commissioner?
My comment would be that the public defender fees that are from quite some time ago have all been covered with payments. So the only thing that wasn't completely covered was the hospitalization and the poor relief, which are also from a long time ago, so, which are in question.
You asked for the question, or?
I said they were in question.
Oh, I told you I have a cold. I can't hear a thing.
No, I know. We all do.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, we have a motion and a second to compromise the lien in full and discharge the lien, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. The lien's been discharged and you're free to buy a house. Item 10. Is opportunity for public comment for any person who may have comments on an item that is not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you now. No one's moving, so we'll go to regular business. Item 10 is consider a motion to appoint two applicants to the Planning Commission for a four-year appointment. Scott Anderson.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, Planning Director for the county. And today I have an item for your consideration. We have two planning commissioners whose terms are expiring, Mike Cypher and Becky Randall. Mike Cypher has chosen not to seek reappointment. That leaves a position that needs to be filled and two potentially. We had four people that applied, submitted their name in consideration to be a planning commissioner. I haven't attached their basically biography sheet that the county application for your review. I did contact all of them, informed them of today's meeting, indicated it wasn't mandatory, but if they would like to attend, they sure could. And if they did, that it would be likely that you would call upon them to introduce themselves and explain or share with the commission their interest in wanting to serve on the planning commission. This is a four-year commission, appointment to the planning commission. So it would end, it would start on January 1st of 2018, and it would go through December 31st of 2021. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Scott? It's awesome to have four people apply for two positions. I recognize one of the planning individuals here in the audience. If you would like to come forward and make a couple of comments, we'd be happy to hear from you, since you made all the effort to get here and thank you for your service.
You're welcome. I'm Becky Randall. I currently serve on the planning commission, and I am seeking reappointment. I have really appreciated my time on the commission. I feel I've learned a lot. It, there's, I'm sure like on this board or commission, that first year is a little bit of a learning curve, but I appreciate it. I feel I have a good understanding of the county planning needs and our vision for the future and how we can determine appropriate land use for that future planning. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of Becky?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Barth? Becky, remind us which part of the county that you live in.
I live on Logan Township, so I live in the far northeast part of the county. I'm just a few miles from the Minnesota border. So that's where I hail from.
Anyone else have any questions for Becky? Thank you. And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Does the planning board have recommendations, or?
The planning commission did not make any recommendations. We typically don't bring the candidates for their consideration. It goes directly to this board for your consideration, because it's a county commission appointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Having served on the planning commission for a while, I'd first like to just say thank you to Mike Cypher for 20 years of serving, and thank him for leaving. You know, you can be on a job too long, and I think that he reached a point where he felt he had done his thing and thought maybe someone else should step forward and be educated in all of these things. And I will say that I've talked to a couple of our other applicants. I talked to the Adam Morehauser, and I talked to the Angela Landine person, and I think I know Ryan from previous times. Angela has an interesting past in that she worked promoting wind energy and testified at a number of counties across the state, including Lincoln County, as an advocate for wind. She's no longer in that business. Ryan Vander Vliet, his wife, I believe, is an FFA instructor at Tri Valley, and they have some cattle barn. And Adam Morehauser works on the family farm up north and a little bit east of Crooks, and he's, the advantage of Ryan and Adam is that they're young farmers in our county. And I think Ryan, Cindy, he's up more like in Buffalo Township, isn't he?
I thought, I think he, I could be wrong, but I think he lives in Colton.
Yeah, lives in Colton, up that away. Anyway, so I think we are truly blessed to have wonderful candidates here, wonderful candidates, and to make a decision between them is challenging, but that's why they pay me the big bucks, right? I mean, and I guess if someone else wants to say something first, otherwise I would place someone in nomination.
Commissioner Hiberger?
Just a comment that I misspoke, that Ryan lives in Humboldt. I believe he lived in Colton for a while, but he does, his address says Humboldt, so I misspoke.
No problem. Anyone else have any comments?
I'll make a comment. Just that, I too, I'm just was really thrilled that there was four people that applied for this position, because when it first came out, you were, I'm always worried that, is anybody going to try to apply for this? And these are agricultural people that at least have an interest in the background in agriculture, which most of our zoning issues are rural issues. I think we have a great selection, and I hope that when we do this again in four years, or two years, or whenever we do it, that we have a large group of people to pick from. I do know several of people on here, and I think all of them would be great candidates, so.
Okay. Mr. Barth, did you have comments?
Well, again, it's really tough to pick here. The two gentlemen are both township supervisors, and the woman has expertise in an area that's not represented on our commission as, you know, in the wind area, and has been to planning commission meetings across the street. However, she does live in Sioux Falls, as do I, and Paul Cosboth, who are on the planning commission. And so I decided that it might be better to have another one from the rural area. And I'm, I would like to nominate Adam Morehauser, who lives north and east of Crooks, to be on the commission.
Are there any other nominations?
Is there a second?
Second then.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for Adam Morehauser. Is there another nomination?
I just would make a comment. I don't, I really, I had decided that I thought we needed another rural representative as well, just because of the diversity, and I really was torn between two very qualified candidates with very similar experiences. But I would be happy to support Mr. Morehauser, and I'd hope Mr. Vander Vliet would apply the next time we have an opening, so.
And my assumption would be is that we're also reappointing Becky Randall?
That would be my preference.
Yes, sir. Okay. Do we have a second?
We do.
Actually, do we, did we have an individual appointment for Becky?
I'll make that motion.
I didn't hear that in yet.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear.
I didn't hear it either, so.
We have a motion and a second for both Becky Randall and Adam Morehauser. Any other comments or questions?
After we vote, I do have another comment.
All those in favor of the two candidates, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes for Becky and Adam. And Becky, again, thank you for your awesome service. We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that, you know, I hope that folks that didn't get in this time will continue to keep an eye on this and perhaps apply. And Angela Landine, actually on her application, said she would be interested in being on the weed and pest board. So, you know, we regularly have opportunities on one board or another here in the county and keep an eye on it and put your name in. We need you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item number 11. Briefing on the jail bond sale. Mr. Litz?
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz again. And like Gerald told you, I'm here today to give a briefing on what took place on December 5th, the sale of the limited- The sale of the limited general obligation certificates of participation, that's a mouthful, Series 2017, hereforth known as the Certificates for the Minnehaha Jail Project took place on December 5th, 2017. Commissioner Bender and myself signed the sale documents at Doherty Company offices in Sioux Falls on that day, and the sale was managed by the Sioux Falls Office of Doherty Company LLC, and representatives of that firm are present today to comment and answer questions you might have. I have Ray Woodson and Tom Grimmon, and I would have you know that Tom has his avocado green Yoda socks on with the ear attachment, so he's ready for you. There were six bids received that day, with the low bid being from Piper Jaffray with a true interest cost of 2.976 percent, because the true interest cost takes into account the time value of money. It is what is used to determine the best bid, as opposed to average coupon. That interest costs are all-inclusive costs. Since a large portion of the certificates were sold at a premium, it was necessary to decrease the principal size of the issued of $43,255,000, which changed the true interest cost slightly to 2.987. This allows the county to have $45,604,652.95, and that's net of the issuance costs for design and construction. There will be interest earnings on the deposit that decline with the pending construction withdrawals. Those interest earnings will be subject to arbitrage, and the interest rates for the deposits are not known as of today. The proceeds will be deposited with our trustee on December 28th, 2017, and available for approved expenses to be paid on the jail expansion project. And immediately available, the bills will be paid by wire on the 29th, the next day. Right now, we're sitting with about 1.2 million, could go up to 1.5 million estimate on the bills payable that day, depending on if the architects get something in on time. Included in that will be the parking lot, reimbursement costs for the cost of issuance, and some design costs. Available for questions, as are our friends from Doherty Company today.
Thank you, Bob. Woody or Tom, do you have any comments?
Thanks, Chairman. No, I'm, you know, be seen, not heard. That's my mom's philosophy, so, not really. It was an excellent sale, I guess I will say that. We had seven bidders that were looking at it. Wells pulled their bid back at the last second, so we ended up, ended up with the bidders that we ended up with. But it, you know, it looks great. They did what I like to see, and that is they gave us the 2.99 price, you know, that, that one cent always looks better, right? So we're under 3%, and you can say we're under 3%, and, and for 20-year paper, that's very good. That's, that's an excellent.
Well, thank you for your help in managing that sale. Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we'll go to item 12. 12 is to request approval to pay Minnehaha County Water Corporation to relocate a utility. DJ Boothie.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Make sure I have my right briefing memo to speak off of here. So the county highway department is looking at doing a reconstruction project on County Highway 137 north of Crooks in the next two construction seasons. Prior to construction, a lot of times what we have to do is relocate some existing utilities, and statute provides for a county or any government agency to ask a private utility to relocate if they're within the, the agency's right-of-way. In some cases, when the utilities are not within the right-of-way and they still need to be relocated for grading or other reasons, that government agency can respond, can be responsible for those costs. And that's the case with the Minnehaha County Rural Water Corporation. They have some existing utility, or some existing easements that they reside within, and, and we need to do some grading to take out some vertical curve areas, and so there's some costs that, that the county is going to be responsible for. So they sent us an agreement, and, and we went through that with our State Attorney's Office and revised the agreement. The way that the agreement is, is structured right now is 44% of their relocations are within an easement that the county is going to be responsible for. We don't know exactly what those costs are going to be. We have an estimate of what they're going to be, but we don't know what the exact costs are until construction is over. So the, the agreement says that we'll reimburse them 44% of their construction costs for their relocation project, and, and they will relocate prior to construction. They're already actually out there doing some relocation work, and so we don't expect the timing to be any kind of a concern before construction is set to start next spring. Our, our rough estimate right now, based off of, of their engineer's estimate, is just under $69,000 of a cost for Minnehaha County. Their total cost is looking to be about $160,000, so. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them now, otherwise I look for, or I would ask for a motion to approve the agreement as it's, as it's written out.
Any questions for DJ?
Move to approve the agreement?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement to relocate the utility. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 13 is to request an approval to amend professional services agree, agreement with IMS Infrastructure Management Services.
Commissioners, today we're looking for your approval on an amendment with our agreement with IMS. They did our payment management survey this summer. The, the evaluation of the data that they collected is taking longer than what was expected, and so they requested an extension to their agreement. Their original interim agreement completion date was November 4th. That's come and gone, and so they're looking for, or asking for a new interim completion date of February 2nd of 2018. This amendment does not change the actual final completion date of December 30th, 2019. And so, that being said, we're asking for your approval to amend the agreement with the interim completion date.
Any questions for DJ?
Make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I have a question, I guess. DJ, amending this to give them more time, are they giving us any benefit because of us giving them more time at their request?
Commissioner, the simple answer is, is no. We asked them to complete this step of the agreement by a certain date, and they weren't able to perform that. There's a number of reasons that they weren't able to perform it, one being they had another client, a large, very large client that they were working on completing before ours. We're a really small client for them, and so my, my personal guess would be that we probably took a backseat to one of their larger clients. And the second thing that has taken them an extended period of time is their QA QC portion is taking a lot longer than what they thought. The, the numbers have come back, and originally our overall systematic wide payment condition index was a 69 three years ago, which is a pretty decent score. We were happy with that. Three years later this summer, when they evaluated it, our, our condition index was a 78, and so the, the rate of increase is, is really higher than what they've ever seen before. It's an extremely large rate of increase. We were looking at probably expecting to be around 73 or something like that, so they're really taking their time going through each individual segment, looking to make sure there's no errors in their data. And, and so the QA QC is taking a lot longer than what they expected.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate that, DJ, but I remember when I was managing people, telling people, I don't like people being late, and I don't accept excuses, but you know, it's a lot of money involved in this, and I would hope that they would keep in mind our needs are just as important as the big guy. Thank you.
I can add one more comment, too.
Sure.
That's all right. We've, we've scheduled some agreement reviews with our State's Attorney's Office in January, and one of the things that we're going to be looking at is adding some teeth to the the standard agreements that we have for our engineering consultants.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bender?
DJ, can you just comment about how, how this delay does affect your office? What, what?
I can. It's, it's very significant. Right now, we're looking at budgeting and trying to schedule projects for 2018, specifically our pavement preservation, our chip seals, our micro-surfacing, and our asphalt overlay. The best thing that we've done with our pavement preservation projects, aside from actually doing them, is scheduling those bids at the right time in order to get really good prices. And so right now, we're relying on this data that we don't have yet to schedule what roads we're going to do next year. And so until we have that data in hand, we're not going to be able to put together our plans and put our bids out. And so it, it could be a large enough delay that our bids are delayed and our prices are ending up higher than what they should have been, if that makes sense. We're, we're not happy about it.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustment there.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the IMS services agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 is to consider a motion to reject bids and authorize the publishing of notice for cleaning services. Morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. On November 14th, the commission gave authorization to the auditor's office to post notice to bid for contract cleaning for the county buildings. On November 29th, the auditor and myself opened one bid from Marsden Services for the amount of $440,000 and $2.68 for annual cleaning costs. I had a couple inquiries from a couple other vendors that were interested in bidding, but just didn't have enough time as one of the weeks for bidding was over for Thanksgiving holiday. I think it'd be beneficial to the county to reject these bids and rebid to get more competitive additional bids for the contract cleaning. So are there any questions for me?
Any questions for Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I guess for the State's Attorney, can we reject these and then rebid it?
I don't think there's any prohibition, and the, there's been a reservation to reject all bids. There was one bid. I think that in the interest of competition, which is the purpose of bidding, the circumstances, I think, warrant what Mr. Krins has requested.
Mr. Chairman, and that was, with that, I'll make a motion to reject this bid and to reopen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reject the bids and reopen for cleaning services. Do you have a date, Mark, that you'd be looking at?
Yeah, I sent them to Olivia. Let's see here. So we would we would advertise next Monday, Wednesday, and the following Monday, and then, what did I put down for a date? We were going to open January 10th. So that'd give them an extra week on top of the two weeks to put a bid together.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 15, our county commission liaison reports. Any reports? Commissioner Barth?
Chairman, Scott had a, an event in his department yesterday, which has caused some damage to one of our county vehicles and one of our county employees. So he's going to show us a couple of pictures here. Scott, our planning director, why don't you go ahead and tell us what happened?
Yesterday about 9:30 in the morning, our building inspector was involved in an accident. He was on Highway 115 going north towards Dell Rapids, and a 19-year-old, flip that around. A 19-year-old driver decided to pull a U-turn going in the middle of the highway, going 60 miles an hour, and we T-boned him, so it was not our, it wasn't our fault. Luckily, no one was hurt, and it's only stuff. It can be replaced, but both vehicles were totaled, and the young boy, the young man that was driving really only came away with a scratch on his cheek, so luckily, no one was ultimately hurt. The building inspector, I, we'd sent him to the doctor to check out because he had some body aches and pains, so. Yeah, the vehicle's totaled out, and I guess that's what I have to tell you, and it was a half mile north of Midway Corner, so.
There was a citation to the other driver.
Yeah, he got a citation. You can see the, in the background, our sheriff's deputy was there, and we had the vehicle towed to the county highway department, our vehicle, so that will, I'm insurance companies will be looking at it and whatnot, so I'm thankful that DJ let us tow our junk up there, so.
DJ can fix it, can't he, DJ?
So, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I mean, it happened, you know, a day ago, so we're still sort of working out the details.
What year was the vehicle that, ours that was?
Well, our vehicle was a 2004 Expedition that we had originally gotten, received through, from the highway department as a surplus vehicle many years ago. It had about 145,000 miles on it. It was not, you know, the best, I mean, it was not a high-value vehicle by any means, but it still puts us in a, a, a spot where we're going to have to do something, and eventually I'll probably be coming back to you to do something. We have, you know, five people using two vehicles, and the building inspector's pretty much out every day doing stuff. I mean, he does 1,500 to 2,000 inspections a year, so he's out every day.
Commissioner Heiburger?
In the meantime, can we use the commission, one of the commission office vehicles or something, or somebody else's vehicles?
I, I told Carol about the accident yesterday, and she did offer that. DJ also offered that we maybe could borrow a vehicle once in a while. The insurance company is allowing us to get a rental vehicle for the, for a short time, until I guess they work out the details, and so they're paying for a rental vehicle. We're going to be picking that up sometime shortly, so. It was, I, when I saw that, when I went up there and saw how bad that Buick Century, or, yeah, Buick Century, I was just amazed that the young man was not seriously hurt, because you can see that his vehicle was completely caved in, and I've just, what was also surprising is that neither airbags in either vehicle went off, which is frightening by itself, but no airbags went off, but, yeah. So he's, we're, everyone's lucky that no one was seriously hurt.
I'm assuming that everybody was wearing a seatbelt.
I, yes, yeah. So.
Thank God.
Yeah, and the vehicles didn't roll. I mean, when you're going 60 miles an hour down that, at that speed, and someone turns directly in front of you, and you don't have a lot of time to react, and luckily, it didn't, you know, the, the cars didn't roll or anything, it just, we're very, very lucky, and that's all I can say, is given how bad his Chevy Century, or, I'm sorry, Buick Century got T-boned, it's just very, very lucky. I'll be, and, and answering questions or?
Any other questions? Thank you, Scott.
Up a collection now, if that would be appropriate.
Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? Before we go into exec session, Maggie has some information that she'd like to relay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in follow-up to Commissioner Barth's question on the bidding. Because of the unanticipated question, I was conservative and said I don't think there's anything prohibiting that action, but there is specific statutory authority for the rejection and then the rebid. It's under 518A5, subpart 6, which states that that purchasing agency can reject and rebid if they're, if none of the bids are satisfactory. Subpart 7, excuse me.
Is this your last meeting, or do I have to keep asking you so you'll tell me the right date, Mark? That's what I thought. Well, before we go into exec session, I think all of us want to wish you a very successful and happy and healthy and prosperous change to your new banking career, so to speak. You've been a huge asset to the county and to the city and to the community for your work with the legislature and with the chamber. You've done a lot of things for a lot of people, and that doesn't include your previous life at Southeast Area of O-TAC, if you will. That's true, sorry. But anyway, we're going to be sorry to see you go, but we're happy that you're staying in Sioux Falls because besides the class act, you're a huge asset to the community, and we wish you all the best. You're welcome. Thank you for your service. Give you a round of applause. And you won't be here next week, so I won't forget.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to go into a
I'd like a motion to go into exec session for contracts, litigation and personnel. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion for exec session for contracts, litigation and personnel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We'll get together again in about five minutes.